You're gonna have to speak up a little louder.
Okay Perry, pledge allegiance and we'll have you start meeting the council. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you start with your call please?
Here. Here.
Here.
Yes.
I'll look for a motion to excuse the mayor.
So moved, support.
Call favor. We don't need a vote actually.
Councilmember Campfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yeah.
Councilmember Salzberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Yanick?
Yes.
Alright, we have a special presentation. My first if you want to.
Lowell Police Department is gonna recognize somebody tonight. Our policies, our ward's policy allows us to award our officers for doing special things. And we do have a paragraph in our policy where we can recognize a citizen. I'd like to have David Sefton step forward please. David, I can't remember where we were.
Northern physical therapy.
Northern physical therapy over on West Main. I'll make this quick. On Wednesday, you guys all remember the robbery we had at the T-Mobile store? Well, David helped us solve that crime. So, on Wednesday, August 5th, 2020, at approximately 12:50 PM, David Sefton was working at 2050 West Main Street. Suspect's driving a stolen vehicle from the Grand Rapids area and pulled into the parking lot. The suspects with intent to rob drove through the plate glass window of the business next door. David fearing for his employees' welfare sheltered them in the rear of the business. Putting himself in harm's way, David approached one of the building to capture on his camera what was occurring. Exposing himself to possible danger, David took three photographs of the suspect's stolen car. These photos were relayed to police and then detectives were able to determine the identity of one of the suspects. The suspect was later arrested and charged with a felony. Due to his quick actions and thinking, his employees remained safe and critical evidence was obtained. His actions, though seemingly insignificant, on this day were instrumental in identifying a suspect, capturing a crime in progress, and ultimately led to the recovery of $1,000 of stolen property. Lowell Police Department wishes to extend our gratitude and appreciation to citizens like David Sefton for stepping up, putting themselves in harm's way, and assisting in the apprehension of the criminal element. Therefore, today we award David Sefton the distinguished citizen's citation.
Chris, do you want to get another picture?
One set this way so you're in the sun too.
Oh, sure.
There you go, there you go.
Alright then, we're gonna talk about the sun agenda, but we have a couple changes to make personally.
Under Old Business D, we need to add outdoor seating for the restaurant. And also, we need to, under New Business, we need to take off the Eagle Agreement. We'll need to come back to that.
On New Business too, I'd like to discuss maybe take it off to Mike's employment agreement. I know there's some sensitivity to speaking about that. And I feel that it would be possible, we could possibly do that in a closed session along with reviewing it at the same time. I would like to do that so we can get that finally done.
Okay.
And then I'll talk to Mike and see if he can do that. Something to leave the general something special maybe. There's only going to be six or seven of us, we gotta get that done.
Yeah, we were talking about the 19.
So I'd like to at least talk discussing that tonight because there is some sensitivity on your behalf.
I do have a couple questions on payables before we proceed.
Sure.
Mary Ann Sabo PR for $4,900.
Yes.
Can you share what that was, what subject that was on?
The cheap place issue.
Okay. And we really didn't use anything that she wrote, did we?
We used quite a bit that she wrote, actually.
It just seems like a big number for, I didn't see that much out of it.
Yeah, we did use quite a bit.
Okay, and ServPro is still in there for $1,800. I questioned that a couple months ago. With the financial situation that we're in, the private world, we're doing it our own cleaning, I just don't see how we're paying $1,800.
Right, so since that time, that was our last ServPro bill. That money will get reimbursed through the state of Michigan. That being said, we have gone to another company that's doing it for $2.65 every time they come out, so significantly cheaper than what we were paying ServPro.
That's something we can't do in-house with some one shot stuff?
We just don't have the staff for that. They're doing specialized ionization cleaning that we just don't have the capability to do.
Okay.
We had a motion to accept the decision.
So moved.
Nice.
I'll second.
You already have one?
Councilmember Campfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Yanick?
Yes.
Councilmember Teak?
Yes.
Okay, next citizen discussion for items not on the agenda.
Hey, I bet.
Name and address please.
Perry Beach, 924 Riverside Drive. So Coffee with Counsel. Last time it was canceled because it was Labor Day weekend. I understand that completely. I was disappointed in that there was no notice on the website. There was nothing, no notes on the chamber door, no notes on the city hall door that that was gonna be canceled. That Thursday before the meeting, in a flyer included in the water bills, said there was Coffee with Counsel. And again, I don't disagree with canceling it because of Labor Day, but again, we just need to do a better job of getting that information out. And then that takes me into the website. So, a lot of these things I was gonna discuss with counsel at that, but last meeting we didn't have a forum and... So, website. There still seems to be a lot of glitches in the website. If I go and call up the city council, shows all five. If I leave that and come back to the city council, all of a sudden I get Jeff Phillips as a member. And I showed this to Marty on Sunday. So, there's a lot of glitches in that, and I know that we keep on... Over the years have paid substantially to have a website, and again, I just, the city needs to address those and work with the website. Corner of King and Lafayette, there's, which is actually in the city park, there's a big mound of trees, debris that's there. And I thought, well, maybe that's leftover from the fire that Lowell Light and Power had with the transformer. So I checked with our general manager and sent pictures, and because we hired, at Lowell Light and Power, I'm on the board, we hired a company to come in and to take care of all that stuff. So we, so I then checked and found that that was not from us. Talked to Marty, felt like it was not from the city. I don't know if it's, if it's the union or the unity school group is piling stuff there. I don't know, but it shouldn't be there piled up in the parks. The other is, I'm gonna say that, again, I no longer sit on the parks, but I think it's time for the city council to give a 30-day notice to the Lowell Youth Fair and revoke their use agreement. I sat on with Mike Burns and I, and it wasn't the intention, but at a previous meeting, Mike's, the youth football came, said, you know, made remarks that somebody from the city told him they couldn't use that, and Mike said, and looked into it, and no one from the city said that to them. So therefore, you know, I have not, I don't have a good relationship with the manager at the youth fair, so... But I assume that it was the youth fair would have had to have told them, you know, that they couldn't use that. And I think it needs to go back to one of our proposals when we were working through this, was to have the youth fair have control over everything a week before fair, the week of, and the week after. They said, no, that's not gonna work for them, so we went back and forth and worked out. I don't think it's working out for the city and for the citizens when currently, this weekend, Friday, we're having a drive-in for the movies. We have to go to make an application to the city, we have to go to the youth fair and find out what we have to pay them. They set the rates for us to use the city parks. I don't think that's right. And again, I believe Marty had made calls last week, my wife has made calls today, and we can't get calls back from the youth fair to tell us, you know, what's the rate gonna be, what, can we use it, you know, those types of things. And I just, I truly think it's time that the city would revoke that agreement and move forward. The other is, I think the city also needs to look at an exit plan with, and you might have already been doing that, an exit plan with the fair when they move out. You know, are they taking all the buildings? Are they gonna leave the buildings that are in disrepair? And are the city gonna be responsible for removing those or whatever? But an exit plan needs to be set up for that. Again, I touched on a little bit on the lighter side. The, this Friday, there's gonna be a drive-in, pink arrow football game. You must, people cannot drop kids off, they must come in a vehicle. We're asking to social distance and also to wear masks. The other is reporting for Lowell Light and Power. We have several good candidates. We're going to start the interview process in two weeks. We were going to try to set them up this week, but one of the candidates was on, is on, has a planned vacation, family vacation. We thought it was not fair to them. I mean, they said, you know, we'll cancel it, and we said, no, we can, you know, move it out. So in that. And the last thing, I know we've had consistent talks about the truck traffic. This is Patty Story that lives at the corner of North and Jackson Street, and, you know, we've always, you know, we've heard about the truck traffic on Monroe and Washington. You know, it should be on Jefferson, but she's getting truck traffic on Jackson. They have gone, and her, one of her concerns is, she's had to pay for the sidewalk improvements there, and the truck can't make that corner, is going over the sidewalk. Now the sidewalk's cracked, you know, and so, and she's just telling me this, asking me questions about it. She wasn't really wanting to be put on the spot, but...
Thanks Perry.
With that, that's the information.
The last time I went through, it scraped. What I'm concerned about is the utility pole. It scraped, the trailer was scraped. I could hear it, so it was outside. It scraped right along the pole, the full length of the trailer. And that pole contains electricity for everybody up on Brindle, I don't know how far it goes. But I figured it would take you out because you're south of there. I'm just telling you, it could be an issue.
So, if I can, I drive trucks for a living, okay? And I know when they're doing things like that, they're lost. I also know we have 2,600 drivers across the US. People in your situation, what they do is they get off with their phone, because everybody has one, and you take a picture. And you videotape it, and then you can take it right to our chief, then he can go to the trucking company, and your sidewalk then is covered by the trucking company because they did damage to your thing.
Is it the same truck? Sorry, didn't interrupt.
But that's our policy that, you know, and the problem is, is this probably doesn't have enough data GPS and it's sending down.
I explained that. A lot of times the GPS is directed in that way.
So, but your phone camera is your best weapon.
I just wondered if they could have, if they could have other signage closer to Main Street, on Jackson, instead of the track road, it's the next block over. So they can turn on that corner. On that corner, there isn't a lot of...
Especially the guys out there with this trailer.
Right, because he's out there most of the time.
I know Monroe's really posted heavy, and what do they do? If you posted at what entrance do they do? They make the turn. I live at the corner of Washington, right there. What do they do? They come up there and they make the turn because they got lost, they couldn't remember, they had to go back up the hill to get out, so, yeah. And they do rub my pole.
They do. Sometimes there's even an 800 number for, number for a trucking company on the back.
Yeah, right on the door.
Operator number beep beep beep.
Alright, anybody else wishing to address the council? That will close out, and we'll move on to Old Business. Mike will talk about the water updates.
Yep. I've asked, well, I actually originally asked Breanna Dewitt from ELDI, she couldn't make it tonight. Joe Berlin's here tonight to give you an update of where we're at with this. And we do have a proposal for additional drilling. I'm gonna just turn it over to Joe.
Okay, so there was three wells out there, we installed another six, I think it is, and we've better defined the pool. But what we found is, is actually there's about, at least, the pool is at least 1,000 feet wide, and what we need to do now is start to narrow down where the impact is. So now the proposal is to basically try and define the entire extent of this, and find out not only horizontally, but vertically, how much we have. Because from the wells we have so far, we actually have an impacted zone vertically about 40 to 50 feet. So that's why, you know, when you look at this proposal, you see these numbers, is all these wells are like 70, 80, 90, 100 feet deep, which is really deep for monitoring those. It just has to do with the geology of this area. And what we've done is, we broke this out into three stages, if you will. The first stage is essentially put some wells along the west property line to find out what we have coming on site, and then a little bit on the east property line to find what we have going offsite. And then it'll help us define groundwater flow direction, and then really is what's really going on. And then, based on that, we have another five monitoring wells, and then additional monitoring wells. And those are really, probably do that number, they can probably move around a little bit based upon what we find as we go through these stages, as we refine the groundwater flow. We used a 20% contingency on the low end, 40% on the high end, just as right now, until we go to the state, confirm everything with them, which we really, we've been doing informal, they may want a work plan, we don't know yet exactly on that. Probably then, they will say, usually they want more wells, but less, so that's why we have the contingency in there. Some of those areas are really tough to get into, and so we've been kind of limited in the care of it, so we're going and able to get back in there with really big rigs. We have to have all-wheel-drive rigs to get back in there, track rigs, and basically we've had to cut a bunch of trees. And that's also why the drilling is a little bit more hard than we would normally see. We found a drill that's given us some really good deals, so that's the drill that we've used. We asked some quotes on this, and that's what's included in this cost estimate. Just wanna take a look at it, is we have a number on there for base our engineering, and then there's groundwater monitoring, which we require to at least annually is to go out and sample all the wells. That takes our guys about three or four days to do because the wells, again, they're so deep. And then there's the investigation part, there's mobilization number one, number two, and number three. We will probably use all three mobilizations, but hopefully as we get to the end, we'll be able to narrow down, maybe skinny down the volume of the costs associated with that. But until we get out there and start doing the work, especially this first phase, we'll probably use all of that money. The purpose is that we get a good deal on the drilling, and then we'll, last, we found that we had, we were able to get done actually in quite a bit less time than what other drillers gave us the proposal for. We did it in five days, other drillers had ten. The drill that we've been working with is gonna be a strong for us. So if you want to discuss the numbers at all, I can give you some other details if you'd like.
So there's nine wells, one out.
There's 11 wells right now.
Eleven.
Yeah. And the next phase, we would install additional six wells. Again, these wells are all gonna be deep. They're all, you know, 70, 80, 100 feet deep.
And you don't know what's coming after that.
Yeah, when we got proposals, in the second mobilization be five, and the last mobilization 10. That's because we base it at that point, probably going offsite to the east. And again, when we put these wells in most, we're gonna have one well near the water table, and then probably anywhere from 20 to 30 feet into the water table. Because we're finding this is that the impact is not only near the water table, but it's actually, you know, 10, 20 feet into the water table as well. What we're supposed to do is define the horizontal and the vertical extent. And it's just inherent in this type of problem, is, you know, if you put it on in concentrations, it tends to stick and seep out of the water.
So according to this, you're gonna drill additional wells yet this year, for 2020, and we were already done?
We've done wells this year, is probably what happened is, is that, once we get this approved, we'll be in touch with the agency, develop the scope of work to either implement it late this year, or sometime during next year, as we did this year.
I'm confused. I thought the scope of work was determined before we even got to today, so we still don't really know.
Well, we know when we're pregnant, probably gonna propose to the agency, we've worked with the council on that, and we understand the geology well enough. Again, we're gonna fine tune that geology, because these wells, all these wells are like 300 to 500 feet apart. When you're doing groundwater definition, that's quite a distance, and that's what we're gonna start doing now, is find out what's included. We may find some hot spots, we may find some areas with no detections, and again, these wells are, you know, it's like from here to way the heck over there. So when you're doing this kind of definition, usually your wells are maybe 100 feet apart, not 5, 600 feet. Good question. It's a lot of money, I know. But again, that's why, these wells are just about that deep. And what happens when you get beyond about 50 feet deep, you have to go up like a whole size in the grid. So whether maybe 30,000 foot pounds, now you're on 50, 60,000 foot pounds of tar. And these augers are like that bigger.
We budgeted $88,000 this year. My analogy about spending is different. Unfortunately, this is, as I said before, we could get, we could keep on giving. Really nothing to do about it. I was telling Cliff before the meeting, we track, we've been able to kind of go through a history of this. And there was communication between the city and the state back in the late 70s, early 80s, mid 80s, late 80s, and then from like 1990 odd, there was nothing. And until 2019, we have a call from them that we have to reference, so it's kind of what our, that's kind of what our paperwork shows us.
The money that the LCP we gave us for this purpose, is that gonna cover this, or does it cover passing?
Cover pass.
So does the decision have to be made tonight, Mike, for the implementation?
Yeah, duh. If we could make a decision tonight, then at least it gives them an opportunity to complete the work before the end, before the winter ends. I was gonna make a motion that we keep going forward, so it isn't gonna go away.
Do I have a second? Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you both. We have a Lowell Township water and sewer rate study. Mike?
In August, I was directed by the council to reach out to Supervisor Hale and find out Lowell Township's status as creating their own water and sewer system. Since that time, I had a television conversation, and I also received a letter, which I believe I shared with you. To date, they have conducted the original study we discussed in July. This study suggested the development of public water, sanitary sewer service for southern end of the township is feasible. They intend to continue to contract with the city for the northern portion of the township, while their separate system will serve properties in the southern portions. The study also recommends a single sanitary sewer to be developed in order to serve all party, planned portions of the township eventually. Since the receipt of the study, the Township Board has authorized the expenditure of $1,000 to pay additional engineering fees associated with discussion with regulators, beginning to refine engineering options. They've also retained the services of bond counsel and a financial advisor and underwriter to investigate rate structure issues, as well as financing options. They are also working on securing a property for the site. After receiving this information, both the city attorney and I have believed the study proposed for utility financials will be needed no matter what occurs moving forward. This will impact our rates, and the study will provide us a better understanding of the effect. With this aside, there are also upcoming possible expansions, which will lead to a curve to our water and wastewater facility, mainly to accommodate the township's growth that we will still need to work through. The total cost of the facility will not exceed $15,000, which can be split evenly by the Water and Wastewater Fund. The study can be completed in six weeks, according to Mark Bochamp, who's the company's president. I recommend that Lowell City Council authorize the rate analysis of potential rate impact from Lowell Township's production of water and wastewater system at cost not to exceed $15,000.
Any questions, Perry?
I don't see anything in their proposal that calls out $15,000 not to exceed. It only gives their hourly rate.
Correct, correct. And they confirmed that it would not exceed over $15,000 by default. We've had new, we have had two conversations with them.
Yeah, I just don't like verbal conversations.
I understand what you're saying.
I like it black and white.
I agree.
Because I'm not, I don't think I'm a big fan of giving them $15,000 on the phone call.
Would you, would you like me to go back to them and get that in writing?
Well, we need to get this going. I thought at the last meeting we approved this, but said, make sure it's not too late with Jerry Hale. I haven't gone back to listen, but that was my understanding of, let's do it, but make sure it's not too late.
Well, my understanding was to not do anything until I had those questions answered.
Right, but we've just lost a lot of time. I think we need to get going.
I think we can go ahead and approve it tonight.
Yeah, just tell them we want to confirm it right now.
You can sign it.
You're on record as saying that it can't exceed, you know, and you're going back to them, and if they go, no, that's not suitable to them, then they're gonna notify you. But you're saying that their hourly rate not to exceed $15,000, I mean, you can't have, I mean, I don't think you need to have a written, you know, written or anything before you vote yes on it.
It's just, it's a lot of money, so.
No, I think we're voting yes on it, we just might clarify in writing that it doesn't exceed this. I make a motion to approve the study?
I have a second?
Yes, second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I would just say that Mark Bochamp is who Lowell Light and Power uses for all their studies, and Light and Power, again, it's a different animal, you're talking water, but Lowell Light and Power has been very supportive or endorsed, Mark, and has done a wonderful job for Light and Power. very supportive or endorsed, Mark, and has done a wonderful job for Light Power.
Okay, Mike, you're up for the mirrors.
Oh, MERS. Not much to report since then, since the last meeting. The only thing I'd like to consider eventually, and we don't have to make a decision out of tonight. Our audit's going to be next week. And as of right now, we are, we are about $197,000 revenues over expenditures. We also just received, if you, if you recall, I applied for $92,000 in reimbursement for our public safety costs. We received $46,000 of that. I don't know how much more of that we're actually going to get because they had, they had $300 million, $350 million worth asked, but only $200 million to, to, to spend. So I don't know if we're going to get any more of, any more from that. But we're about 200, about $240,000 to the good. What I'd like to do is, since we've got a million dollars built up in our fund balance, I don't necessarily think that money needs to go back into our fund balance. I'd like to make, I, what I'd like to do is I'd like to take $75,000 of it, put that set aside for the fire truck that's going to come in 2022, and then take the remaining portions and put it towards the pension gap. And what I'd ultimately like to do is every year, every year since I've been here, we've always had more revenue over than expenditures. And what I'd like to do is, rather than building up the fund balance anymore, because I think we're at a good place, I'd like to start making payments, additional payments to MERS for this issue. And hopefully, I mean, while it won't, while it won't solve the problem tomorrow, it will help us in the long run.
Well, I think that's a great idea and I appreciate your taking this seriously. Because I think in the past, we kind of just stuck our heads in the sand and that's what got us where we're at. Appreciate your focusing all our extra funds on that.
Okay, then we had key.
Yeah, so we had a request from Flat River Grill. There's nothing in your packet. Yeah, there's nothing in your packet. I apologize for that. As you, as you know, we've allowed all the restaurants to use our public space. Since this time, we've only had one restaurant, which is Flat River Grill. We reached out to every restaurant, but only one has expressed interest. Flat River Grill is reaching out to us for the winter months when it gets colder. They'd like to put igloos in place in the, in the public space area, which I have no issue with. I think that as long, I mean, as long as they're, they meet, you know, fire safety and all, and all of those things. I don't see it as an issue, but I wanted to at least get your blessing before I said okay.
So with those, all the ones igloos we've been into, they, they got electric heaters in them. My question is, is they going to run their own, you know, how they're going to get power to these igloos? What I'm tapping into our power?
That is a good question.
And Osby Safety has, you're talking on the sidewalks across the street, and the power outlets over there.
So they're going to have to.
They're going to have to get power from their building to those sites.
Maybe they come up overhead, drop it down on the fence and run it along the backside.
My guess is that they're probably going to try to use the same propane heaters that they've already been using outdoors and stuff.
You know, the classic.
Those are way, those are way too tall.
Well, the carbon monoxide from those things, I'd like to take a test meter and even to their indoor seating they have now, I think it would exceed the allowable. So yeah, it would have to be an electric source. There's no type of combustion that would be safe. Try null them anyways, but yeah, I just, there's some safety concerns with it. I'd certainly encourage them. I just got a comment, just a question, asking where do they want to put those in relation to what we have planned for storeable in the winter time, or are they going to be responsible for that? Because if they use some very big equipment down through there, those things aren't small.
That's good fun, dude. I mean, if they're willing to keep it clean, then we don't have to deal with it. Get them their own.
We're not having any winter festivals down here in this one that we're aware of at this point that they're sticking out or the Santa event.
Well, they'll, they'll have the Santa event. You may have the Christmas event, possibly. That's still up in the air.
They still need to have, I mean, a pathway for citizens to go through, through there.
That's, that's all, you know, that's what I told them, is I thought the only concern I had is as long as we make sure there was access to go through there.
The ones that I saw, what they said, 46, maybe?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Not, no.
Coffee shop, Grand Rapids, have a couple of years.
My former community has.
Pretty cool.
We'll talk to Ryan, teach where that Lowell Light Power. I would think if, if they paid for the process and the equipment, I would think there'd be a way to at least put a temporary meter on, along the river rock or whatever, so that, you know, that they would power into that and then you wouldn't have to be running lines over. And I don't, I don't know if that's a possibility, but it certainly would be a question I'd ask Ryan.
Yeah, Ryan would be excellent for giving the answer. Brian's always thinking it's going on.
I think that they'd be able to put in a temporary, temporary meter that would measure the amount of electricity that they're using.
I get the consensus. We're okay with it? Fire and nursing care, if they need.
Sure.
Okay. With that, I guess we'll move on to new business, Resolution 2020, Mike.
Yes, the city has not reviewed the rate of surcharges for our industrial pre-treatment program in 10 years. After reviewing the amounts for the surcharge, we believe it is necessary to modify the charges. Its charges in instances, wastewater is about 300 milligrams per liter of biochemical oxygen demand, 300 milligrams per liter of suspended solids, and/or 10 milligrams per liter of phosphate. Currently, the city only has two entities participating in our industrial pre-treatment program. This has no impact on our normal residential and commercial user. Ryan Van Armeland, he's here to explain this to you in a little bit better detail. He's suggesting that the surcharge amount increase for the following. For BOD, currently we charge 18 cents. We would ask to go to 29 cents. For suspended solids would be 26 cents. It goes to 35 cents. And then for phosphate, there actually would be a reduction from $6.79 to $6.66, $6.60. If we do make these changes per our sewer ordinance, they must be approved by resolution. So there is Resolution 2020 for consideration. I'm going to turn on to Brian, he's going to explain this a lot better than I can.
Excellent, Mike. He did a pretty good job. So basically, what it is, it's just a calculation of how much it costs to run a plant versus what's coming to you. Like you said, we got two industries, we found that participate in the IPD program. Basically, they sent us more stuff than your typical businesses. They're formally charged extra based on what they signed. Like you said, we, we haven't updated the rates in 10 years. We look at them every year. We just have a lot of few guys in there here, so we're down a pro time. Any questions?
Why is one going down?
It's just, it's a calculation based on what's coming in. So chances are that parameter has actually, the amount coming in has actually decreased.
Did it say what the revenue would generate that extra 9 cents? Is this based on, this would be 441,000 and 29, 9 cents would be the increase?
Say that again?
Well, you're looking at the BODs that are at 441,000 and 220,000. Increase is 9 cents. Is that 9 cents per pound?
It's, it's not on that 441,000. It's on the amount that the two industries send us.
Okay.
So it'll, two industries are Fullers and Whitehouse. Fullers, Fullers it'll probably decrease, it's because of the, like, we surcharge them in this past year. Whitehouse will increase, so it's basically just the percentage between 18 cents to 29 cents. It'll be around 40% or something like that.
Can you explain what the situation was that you came to be about this, because there was a dollar increase? Can you explain that?
It's far as that much.
Right, remember we had the issue with Whitehouse? That's what you brought, kind of, in the summary, triggered this to me?
Well, just because they're, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
You said that there we would have gotten like $3,000 more surcharge or something like that?
Yeah, so if their typical surcharge to us is $1,000 this month, that's based on 18 cents. If you took that, multiplied about 29, it would be about $1,800 maybe. And those, the monthly report has, my monthly report to you guys has, where the surcharge is on. I don't know if you guys scroll that far down in your, in your records, but it's in there. So if you were to compare a few months back, and then just take those. It's enough to make it worth while.
Any other questions? Well, I guess I'll look for, ooh, Resolution 2020, IPD's sanitary sewer surcharge increase.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2020.
I support.
I support.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Andrew. Yes.
Yes. Look at the LARA Resolution 2020.
Since the city is an applicant on behalf of LARA for funding the Fred Meyer Flat River Valley Trail connection through the Lowell community. The grant is through the Michigan Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternative Program. As part of this grant request, the city must approve a resolution for consideration. Attached to Resolution 21-20, which is a formal commitment and requires that I act as the city's agent in this grant request, the city agrees to commit funds necessary for this project and agrees to owning and operating the facility and developing a maintenance plan in the area where the grant is funded. Our grant application deadline is October 1st, 2020. I'm recommending the city of council, the city of Lowell City Council approve Resolution 21-20 to commit towards the LARA Fred Meyer Flat River Valley Trail project. Dave, I'm going to say.
Is that the money, the immediate agent says yes. Does it, you have to come up with 40%?
Maybe Dave can explain that.
So a couple of years ago, Enda through this grant program gave a conditional commitment to the city for about $2.5 million towards this project. And now, because we've had to change the route on the east side, they're requiring that we do this, you've already done this Resolution 1. So all they're asking is because of the change in the route, that you have a new resolution, recommitting to it. This is not an agreement, the formal final agreement. This is just for them to consider the change in the application due to the route. If they approve that and all the other funding falls in place over DNR and such that we're working furiously on right now, then you will be asked to consider a formal agreement with Enda with specific dollar amounts. So this is just to keep the application process going.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess I'll go for a motion to approve Resolution 21-20, the LARA.
I made the motion that we, we adopt 21-20.
I'll support that. Hold please.
Councilor Andrew.
Yes.
Councilor Andrew.
Yes.
Councilor, uh, Matt, Councilor Andrew.
Yes.
And Councilor Andrew.
Yes.
With that, we're skipping C and D tonight, so we'll move on to the manager.
Sure. Got a number of things since, since we have been here five weeks. The, the first thing, I do have some good news for a change. We've done some revenue estimating for, for the, for the current fiscal year. And if you recall, we made significant reductions to our revenue sharing in our Act 51 funding, along with our Lowell Light Power pilot in the budget. The good news is, back in August, when the state did their revenue estimating conference, they determined that while the revenues for, for sales tax and, and, and gas tax are, are down compared to the fiscal year prior, they're not as bad as what they projected back in May, when COVID first came about. So as a result, the city is about, we are now projecting about $94,000 additional Act 51 dollars, which is your gas tax, your street funds. We also have about a $43,000 increase in our, in our revenue sharing for our statutory and our congressional amount, which is, which is still, which is better than what we initially planned. It's still a little bit less than what we had projected for the last fiscal year, but it's not as bad as what we projected when we did, when we approved the budget in May. Also, in talking with Steve Dockersloot, our pilot is about, projection is about $17,000 higher than what we projected. So little bit of good news. And if you recall, we, we came in under budget, even our original projections and expenditures. And this will just help us with a little bit of a cushion. The, then some, some new other changes as well. If you recall, back in July, I had submitted a number of, of our COVID expenditures to Kent County. As Kent County received $122 million through the CARES Act, which of that $15 million was supposed to go to local government. So when we received our August sales tax payment from the state of Michigan, we had our, we had our, our normal constitutional spend, our revenue sharing, but they didn't give us a statutory revenue sharing payment for the month of, for the August payment. They gave us 150% of what it would be projected, but that money was allocated through the CARES Act. So that 17, so it was about $17,000 that came into the city. That money had to be used for all of our COVID expenditures. So since we had probably racked up at the time, probably about $15,000 in COVID expenditures, that money had to be used for the COVID expenditures. The good news, the other good, but the other good news now is Kent County had to reallocate how they were going to handle the local government component for the money. So they put up, they put a formula together and as a result, the city's going to receive $130,000 for CARES Act funding. What we can use that on, I don't know yet. But Kent County is in the process of putting those guidelines together for us as to what we can and cannot use the funds for. As you also recall, we applied for hazard pay reimbursement. We just received that Friday. We've also received, as I mentioned earlier, we put a request in for $92,000 in reimbursement for payroll for our public safety, for our police officers. We received $46,000 of that. I don't know, as I said before, I don't know if we're going to get any more back because as I said, there was $200 million pot that they had for that, $350 million of requests. So I don't know how that's going to. So they've given, they've given every municipality who applied 50% of their ask to this point. So better than nothing. So I, but there's a possibility with that $130,000 that we could use that for additional months of payroll reimbursement for, for police and maybe even our fire allocation. Still, like I said, I'm still trying to figure a piece through that. Hopefully in the next couple of days, we get some more clarification from the county on that. So, but as, as I said, our, our financial position is, it's a little better than what we projected back in, back in May. Also, just an aside, I was in a, I was in a webinar with Treasury about, about two weeks ago and they talked about the state treasury has.